Okay, it is 5:30 and it is time for our work session to begin. Are we recording?
Yes.
All right. Good. Good to know. So with that, this is the work session meeting for the City Council of Minutrista, October 18th, 2021. And present this evening for the work session are myself, Lisa Whalen, the mayor, council members Pam Mortensen, John Chomperlin, Ann McGregor, Kathleen Refkin, Gary Peters, who is our Public Works Superintendent, our Director of Administration, Ally Paul Foose, and also our City Administrator, Mike Broney, and our Finance Director, Brian Grimm. We have three items on our agenda. We have Hiring Firm Discussion and Decision, and the Sewer Fund Budget Discussion, and the Surface Stormwater Budget Discussion.
So before we start the number two on the agenda, I think I'm going to suggest that when we talk about them in this public meeting, since we haven't made a selection, is to refer to them by number. Hiring Firm One, Hiring Firm Two, Hiring Firm Three. You had the schedule that Ally provided that will tell you which one is which. I think that's a good thing to do during this particular meeting, and then when we get to the regular meeting as well, if we've made a decision in this meeting. And if that's the case, once we do that, we'll obviously say the firm that's being selected is blank, and I'll say it's blank. Is that how you remember it, Ally?
Yes.
Okay.
You said it correctly, and the order is the order they interviewed too.
Yeah.
So if you can just remember that. Okay, well, City Council interviewed three executive search firms for the purpose of selecting a firm to conduct the city administrator hiring process at the special meeting earlier tonight. So the purpose of this item is just to discuss the interviews, as I said, using interviews one, two, and three instead of their name. And if a firm is chosen, we are ready to go ahead and approve that at the regular City Council meeting tonight, so.
I think the actual item on the council agenda, is kind of getting ahead of ourselves, is to, I'm trying to find it here, how it's listed.
Negotiate the contract.
Negotiate a contract with executive first search firm. So as you heard, there was some room, I think it was asked of one of them that, and I'm sure it'd be true for all of them, what we could negotiate. We could talk about that here, what you'd like to see us offer, since we're using numbers for each search firm. If there's other things, I think Councilmember Chomperlin mentioned something about the, oh, the management/leadership assessment thing, if that's negotiable. I think there's a lot of things that we would want from you. But for now, Ally, if you want to just kind of start, I guess.
Yeah, I said my piece, so.
Oh.
Okay.
I thought you might add more.
Nope.
That's all right, didn't want to cut you off.
All right. Yeah, just real quick. So we briefly talked about it during our special meeting, and all three firms were very good. All three firms had pros and good points and some not-so-good points. But I think, no matter who we go with, we would have a really good product. So with that, any further discussion? You know, it wouldn't hurt to, you know.
To get it started again, to reiterate a little bit?
Yeah, a little bit.
I'll just, I'll start, okay. So, Firm Number One, I felt, had the most professional presentation, and went through all of our concerns. And I felt that they had done this numerous times before, and had a professional format, and they seemed to really know what they're doing. Firm Number Two, I can say the same thing. There's a different personality to Firm Number Two, a different way of looking at things, and a slightly different approach. I like both of them. Firm Number Three, there's no question that the Minnesota aspect of it is present and could be very valuable to this search. And I thought that they gave a very interesting presentation with some unique aspects specifically to them, such as their guarantees and their approach in the interviewing process.
Okay. Are you leaning towards one or the other?
Well, when we had our initial discussion, I was leaning towards Firm Number Two. I can go with Firm, I can go with Firm One or Two.
Okay. Kathleen?
I agree with everything Anne said, for the most part. Just with a few caveats with Firm Three, a couple of things that they offered, as I said before, with not knowing all the candidates that applied, and just getting a final list and not getting a full view of the pool. Firm Two, definitely, I liked their style, personalities, they were the best. They also have Minnesota experience in the job, so they know what is required and what to look for in the applicants. Definitely leaning towards Firm Number Two.
Okay. Anne, John?
Again, what both Anne and Kathleen have said, I'd like to, again, Number One and Three for their weekly reporting that they stated. Number Two didn't specifically say that there was some type of consistent reporting, which, to me, I'm just comfortable with having that reporting, even if they come back and say, there's nothing, you know, we've got four candidates, and we still only have four candidates, whatever. Just so that there's some type of structure in the reporting. I do like the Minnesota connection on Number Three. I like their attention to a timeline. They were pretty specific with how they would, what they had presented this, and how they would try to abide by that. And I think, we all know, trying to get this process done in an orderly and consistent fashion is important. So it boils right down to it, one or three, I'm comfortable with. Three would be my preference, for a couple other minor reasons, which, again, was financial, and obviously their guarantees for two years. And it did sound like, at least they did represent that probably they had a 10% changeover when someone was hired, and then they might have to come back later and use that guarantee. So, I mean, at least we've got a two-year guarantee there, where the others were one. So for those reasons, I would lean to Three, with One being the second.
Okay. Okay. All three, in my mind, were very good candidates for this opportunity. And I agree with all what was said from the others. I'm tending to lean, I would go with either One or Two, but I'm tending to lean with Number One. Just, I really, their management and leadership assessment was included in the finalists. The other ones, the other Number Two, did make the charge. And I also liked their assessment process. I think that was really, really good. And, yeah, so I would be comfortable with either One or Two. Three was good too, but my first choice would be Number One, but I'm comfortable with Number Two as well. Wow, we're across the board here. Yeah, we have, Anne is okay with One and Two. Kathleen is leaning towards Two. Pam is, her Number One choice is Number One. Her Number Two choice would be Number Two. And John is Number Three, first choice, and Number Two is his second choice. Number One, yes, it's his second choice. I would say, so again, I think, again, I think all of them have really good points. I think the 24-months guarantee with the Number Three is good. I also think the Minnesota connection with Number Three is good. However, I think the connection is still going to be there with One and Two as well. So I'm going to take that off the table, because I do think all three of them have connections to Minnesota, have strong connections to Minnesota. So what I, I do agree that the leadership assessment, some call it personality assessment, some call it leadership assessment. I do think that's important. And Number One and Three had that included. Number, okay, I'm trying to get the numbers right. Number Two said there would be an additional cost, but if you added that, you know, approximately cost might be the same as Number One. So I, boy, I think, I think I would say either One or Two, and I would have to maybe lean a little more towards Number One. I mean, I liked, I liked, they're so close. It's such a hard decision between, in my opinion, between One and Two.
Let me throw out another point that I think I observed.
Okay.
Number One seems to be more of a national firm. And although I think they're, they have a Minnesota connection, I think the reason we're feeling that they're more sophisticated and their presentation style and what they provide is because they are a national firm and will pull from other states. So perhaps, just throwing this out here, something to discuss, is whether or not we want them to pull from other states.
Well, good point. Because do we want to even consider those costs? There would be costs involved, so. I would say they're not a national firm, but their emphasis could be more national.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but good point.
The only comment I'll make about that is, like I mentioned, I've known the one person from Number One for many years. She's been in this state, man in the metro, for all those years doing this stuff. So even though Anne is correct, it's probably a bit of a more national firm. These two people are both Minnesotan-based and have always been. When that firm got bought out, I mean, they just switched the logo on the business card, kind of thing. So it wasn't a big deal. I don't see that as an impediment to, like, the national firm. Do we need all this quote "national firm" kind of logo, so? Just my two cents on that.
Which one was a weekly update? I think it was One and Two, right?
One and Three. Two said that they would do it as things happen. And I'm guessing it was because there's going to be a brief period where they put the job out, and then they just, applications trickle in. So I don't think they necessarily want to commit to saying, "We're going to update you every week," even if they don't get anything that week. I'm assuming, once the ball gets rolling, that we'll get weekly updates on it with regard to the assessments and that. I don't see why we couldn't ask Firm Two to include that in their price.
Oh, I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we may get a critical factor.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask this. Is there any one firm that we would say there's something we definitely don't like and don't want to see? That's the problem. I think all three of them have good points, but is there one thing that they said or that they would service, they did or didn't provide, that we would definitely want or not want?
Okay. I feel that Number Three, their timeline is the longest. And perhaps they need all that time, but the other two, I think, will be shorter. And if I recall correctly, I think it's Firm Number One that said they could do it by the second week of January. It's like January 10th or something.
Well, on their chart, they have 12 to 14 weeks for Number One.
Okay.
And Number?
Maybe it's Number Two then.
Two said 14.
Two was the fastest. But there were actual, someplace, charts or something, I think it might be Ally's chart, at the end of the chart, there were actual dates. And one of them had something like January 10th on it. But, she didn't.
Could have been when the promotional materials were sent out.
Yeah, that could be too.
But I think, as the mayor mentioned, Number One said 12 to 14, Number Two said 14, and Number Three said 17 weeks.
I think the timeline, for me, would be very important. And if One or Two can deliver in 12 to 14 weeks, for me, that, for me, that's important. But again, so that's maybe why I would, I would say no to Number Three.
It was Firm Number One you're referring to, Anne.
Thank you.
If I had to eliminate one, I would say Firm Three. If you were to eliminate one, Anne?
Three.
And?
Three, I would like to know how many other candidates are in just the semifinals.
And we could ask for that, I mean, I'm sure, but, okay. So would you eliminate, which one would you eliminate?
Three.
Okay. John, can you be convinced?
To eliminate one?
Right.
I eliminate Two.
Okay.
For one of my Two that I picked, I have to eliminate?
No, no, no. You eliminate, okay. It kind of seems like?
He's awaited. You've got what we said were One and Twos. Put a value of Three on the Ones and Two on the Twos.
Go ahead.
Well, so, I wrote down, as you guys wrote, we're all talking, I think I've got the right order, correct me if I'm wrong. Anne had, in order, One, Two, and Three, kind of, I just put question mark, because I didn't hear the word "No," so I put it in the "No."
Fine.
Kathleen had Two, One, with Three as a "No." John had Three, One, with Two as a "No." And then both Pam and Lisa had One first, Two second, Three as a "No." Did I get them all right?
Yeah, you got them right.
Okay. So if they're weighted, it'd be One, I think. Because that's the only one that John would have points for.
So One showed up on Five's list, Number Two showed up on Four's list, Number Three showed up on One's list.
Okay. Yeah.
So you could do it that way, and go with the one that at least showed up on everybody's top two. Even not, would have been your first one, like in Kathleen's case. But Number One was first place on, first on Four, I believe.
It's ranked choice voting.
Ranked choice voting.
Don't say that, you never want that.
Well.
My opinions are.
Well, at the very least, I think we have One and Two. So, and it sounds like what?
But you can't hide it too.
But we can't hide it.
The way I would, hate to be the bear of that.
So it sounds like we're more towards Number One.
Okay, let's, well, let's actually, we have the time.
Yeah.
Let's actually take it five minutes and actually discuss One and Two.
Okay.
John, you gonna give it? Let's discuss One and Two. So, and we've laid out the things, but let's reiterate them again. Let's, let's say, what I liked about Two was her command of the information, the fact that she very definitely knew what she was talking about, definitely had experienced it, gave an excellent presentation, was clear and concise, and decision-driven. One, my comment's going to be that they were super professional. They had a nice tag team between the two of them, very excellent in their presentation. I didn't feel that they necessarily knew all the same things that Number Two knew. But again, they've got, they've got the better professional assessment, managerial assessment in theirs. And they said they would negotiate on price, so perhaps there's something to be said there. My two cents.
Okay. John?
I think the only thing, if we're reading One and Two, would be, again, I would lean to One in that their management leadership assessment's included. Of course, their price is higher than Two currently, but they did say, you asked specifically, they did say it was negotiable. Their tag team, I would hope, would work with the recruiting itself. They feed off each other. They both obviously have certain specific tasks. And I think where Number Two was just representing, she's got a staff behind her, but we didn't, we don't see that staff, we don't know that staff. Here, we had, with Number One, we had Two that we know are going to be physically involved, and they both seem to be very knowledgeable and polished with it, so.
You know, my question would be, if we think about it, and maybe they both be the same, but which one could bring us the most and the best candidates?
Most what?
The most and best candidates. So if we just think about that, and that, because the really bottom line is, that's besides the leadership or personality assessment, that's the most important thing. Who can bring us the best? I don't want to say most candidates, but five highly qualified candidates. Who do we pick?
I think they both, they're both going to pull from the same group of people. I don't think either One is going to give us a completely different set. Obviously, we wouldn't know, but.
Yeah, right.
They're both big enough companies that are going to pull from the same listings of people. Option Two is filling positions right now, so possibly has people in the Minneapolis area, just off the top of our head, that they know. I didn't see that Firm One was filling any city administrator positions right now, so they might just take more time to find those people versus One or Two that is doing it right now. So they've got the list of people that the current positions didn't fill that will be able to pull from faster.
I think Two did the City of Kone one here recently.
Yeah, that's on there. Yeah, St. Louis Park and Woodbury. The price, if you add, if we can't negotiate with Two on adding the personality or the management report, adding that cost brings us to Baker Tilly, and why they said they'd negotiate. We don't know if that means $200 off or $2,000 off. So, I mean, if you add $2,000 for four candidate assessments, you're at the other one.
Right, right. Yeah, dollar-wise, I think it's almost the same if you add the personality/leadership assessment. So I'm fine with Guff HR.
Oop.
Oh.
Whatever number they are. I don't even want to assign a number.
I just wanted to add just a little something, and this is just me. They are in the networking business. They are. And as a person, I've found that Number One.
Sorry.
Number One.
The other one.
Has the combination, I know, I didn't know what you were saying.
I know.
Had the more approachable personality. That's just, she was a little, they were both warmer. And when you're in the networking business, that plays a part. So when you ask, how many candidates are they going to draw? How many people do they know? That plays a part in that puzzle. And I think that their personalities would fit, not that Number Two would, but I think their personalities would go well with Minutrista.
Two's personality is a lot more. Just succinct, short answers.
I like to both, though, you know.
Well, I think we're splitting hairs here, because I think either one will, will do a great job and, yeah, and perform and deliver.
I agree.
So.
So at the moment, we have three Twos, a One and a Three, and a, no. We have three Twos and two Ones.
I think three people have Number One first. One person has Number Two first, one person has Number Three first.
Who's the third person?
Huh?
Isn't it? John's Number One dropped out. Yeah.
Okay. He also has one of the Two obviously remaining. So, like I said, there's, all five council members had Number One on their top two list. Four of the five council members had Number Two on their list. And I think of Number One responding, they showed up on all lists. I believe Anne, Pam, and Lisa had them as the top number.
I mean, I could go with Number Two, too, but.
I understand that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not deciding for you, I'm just telling you, I'm telling you what I wrote down. It's the statistics. I'm giving you the stats. That's per carry.
So, critical factors. Okay. Kathleen, you're staunch on Two?
I prefer them, yes. I won't be heartbroken if I decide I'm One, I can go either way.
Because I can go either way. You can go either way.
I could go either way.
John's against.
You only want One.
Because I dropped Three.
All right. Can I make an observation? It says that we should go with Number One, if you use that rationale.
Otherwise, we'll be here until next meeting.
Okay.
I can take out a coin and we can flip it, but I don't think that's real. I think it's rating, weighting, the Ones rate more than the Twos. And if we've got, you know, three Number Ones, and only, Number Two only came in as a Number One once, great. It's a slam dunk.
You have to make the comments so you don't feel run over.
I don't, and don't feel run over. There's five of us, I'm finding the majority. John's already lost his option.
Right, so listen to me.
You're only the second loser.
No matter whom we go with, I think we're going to get a reputable firm that does a good job. And the price, as we've said earlier, is, maybe is negotiable. And if it isn't, it's still, they're all in the ballpark.
So how do, how do we do the negotiating on price, then? What is our, I guess?
Well, Ally and I can work on that, and Brian as well.
But that might actually make the decision.
It could.
If, if One, that might actually make the decision. If One won't negotiate down to somewhere between, where Two is, and somewhere, then the decision's made, and then.
But do we want to split hair? I mean, at what point do we say, you know, there's a $2,000 difference between One and Two?
Yeah, but a dollar's a dollar.
I know that, but I'm saying at what point?
That's a critical factor, you're right. It's not the critical factor, but.
So, under Number Twos, they said leadership personality assessment available for 100, 500 per candidate. So what is per candidate? Is that the final dozen?
I think it's just whoever we ask it for.
Right, but wouldn't you want that on the 10 or 12, maybe, before it hits there or down?
I don't know, I don't know that Number One is going to do it on 12.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So what would you like me to use, so we can kind of?
You can get apples.
I'm going to, I'm going to go with finalists, myself.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I would say finalists.
So you want to say four people?
Yeah.
Four to five, whatever the finalist number is.
Well, if it's $500, that's an additional $2,500. That's why I was going with that. But if it's $100, it's only $500 difference.
Well, I think we try and get Baker Tilly closer to the 21, because that was, they were including the personality assessment in their 21.
The finalists are the ones completing the assessment for?
One.
One, yes.
It's for one person?
No, all the finalists, for Firm One.
So Option One gives it to us for the finalists.
What Kathleen said.
Okay.
And they do the video semifinalists, just like Option Three did?
Correct.
I think all of them did.
Yeah, they're all doing some sort of.
I think they're all doing some.
Some sort of.
Okay, so.
So I mean, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't necessarily need it for the semifinalists, because we watched the video, we'll get a good judge of their personalities, probably based on that a little bit.
So here's the thing. I want to make sure that we move forward with this as soon as possible, because we don't want to be without an administrator any longer than we have to be. So we need to make a decision tonight, so we can, I think we have to have a dollar amount. If we want to go with Option Number One, then we also have to have a dollar amount that we want to say, we, you know, would you negotiate down to, or negotiate blank amount? And I'm just going to throw a number out here. We'll say 23.5, that's 1,000 off, which is still 1,000 more than Number Two, but it does include four to five finalist personality, whatever you call it, you know, leadership assessment.
I'm fine with it.
The other thing to think about with One is, Two and Three, granted, Three was already dropped out, but the hiring follow-up, One says they do it only upon request, versus Two, which offers a performance evaluation six months later?
Well, then, yeah, we could ask them.
I'd like there to be some sort of follow-up after we get the candidate, where they're going to check in and just, you know, see how it's all going and everything.
Well, then that might be part of the negotiations.
Yeah.
We could say, if they're not willing to negotiate on the price, then we would expect a performance evaluation follow-up. Would that work?
Sure.
Or both, I mean, we can try both.
I would go for.
What we do with just regular employees here, is somebody's hired, you'll see when somebody's coming up to their one year, end of their one-year probation, we have a six-month check-in. And that's primarily done to see if they're doing the job. And you'll know in six months if you think the person that gets hired is doing the job or not. I know Gary can recall the time we had a public works employee that did not make their probation in the last five years. And at the six-month probation, Gary and Cassandra at the time, and myself, kind of figured out what to do to put this particular person on a plan. Plan to give them to one year, so he knew, hey, you got six months, you got to figure this out. He didn't get it. Plan to give them to one year. So he knew, hey, you got six months, you gotta figure this out. He didn't get it, he was out the door. So it wasn't like we just pulled the carpet out from under him. We could do that here. We could have make a six month follow-up. Ask them if they could do that.
Not honesty, you guys will know if they're working on it or not. I don't think you'll need that to tell.
Offer a 23.5, and we'd like you to throw in a six month follow-up with our candidate, if, you know, since, instead of
Yeah.
Taking our price down, I think, that, I don't think that's gonna be a hard thing for them to do. It means a full call on the
Right.
evaluation, plus check-in with you guys, see if the two line up like you want it to, so.
Okay.
Good.
All right. So are you gonna bring that back at the council meeting, then?
Yeah, we can.
You'll just approve negotiating the contract. There's a resolution, and then they'll just insert the name of the firm.
Okay, and then?
We know your parameters.
Yeah.
Okay, based on our parameters that we stated at the work session? Is that what the resolution can state? Okay. All right, all right.
That's perfect.
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good, good discussion. Thank you for, yes. All right, next sewer, oh, sewer discussion, fun.
I know.
I could, I could say something, but you know what?
This is gonna be some bad humor.
Yes, really.
So, maybe I'll use the names of the funds versus, I could say Fund 602, no, I'm kidding. Ones and twos and threes. So, I'll actually, yeah, call it the sewer fund. I think, I think it's okay to state that publicly. So, yeah, basically, starting on page three of the packet, this is our regular annual discussion of the sewer fund for, so we can get the sewer rates and the budget set as part of our final budget process in December of this year for 2022. So what was included in the packet was the financial management plan, as well as a, a draft 2022 budget, as well as a year-to-day report through basically September, three fourths of the year, nine months, September 2021. The current cash balance in the sewer fund is just shy of the 1.2 million, 1,186 has listed there, which is down quite a bit from last year, but we knew we were spending a lot on, or making a decent investment in the Minneapolis Avenue area, in the lift station, everything that was budgeted for in, in 2021, so that was planned for, to have that happen. The sewers, the sanitary sewer utility rate has been at $103 a quarter. Started 2021, when I looked back, I think it's been that way since 2017, so it hasn't moved in about five years. Staff would recommend making the sanitary sewer rate to $106 a quarter, so basically a $3 increase for 2022. One of the biggest chain costs each year is always the MCS, the Met Council wastewater charge, just as part of being part of that regional system. You can see there, our amount that they're allocating to us in 2022 is about 368,000, just shy out there. It's about a $21,000 increase, 6.3% from 2021 to 2022. Just based on, that's based on the flows we report to them, and based on what they're doing with their budget for their overall, you know, regional, regional system. As far as the connection and sewer area charges, both of those right now are at $1,100. I think staff would recommend, those have not been increased in quite some time either. Staff would propose increasing those rates to $1,200 per connection, as well as increasing the sewer area charge to $1,200 per acre above the OHW. Just based on we're having increased costs, and we're making increased investments, obviously, there's, you'll see here in a bit of the, the capital improvement plan, there's just items that over time age and that need maintenance repairs, you know, all the way up through capital improvements, so I don't know if, maybe before we dive into the numbers, if anyone's really got any comments, just on the memo and some of those staff recommendations there, I guess, I guess I see one hand here already. So.
Yeah, you do. So, so, okay, so let's start with the sanitary sewer utility rate. So, I don't need to note in total depth, but why a $3 per quarter increase instead of, say, a $2 per quarter increase? Why?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, how do we get that number?
I mean, basically, just trying to, looking at some of the, the cash flows and just going, you know, jumping ahead page six there, you know, I guess the, the overall, if we end up having to do all the budgeted improvements, you know, the cash fund balances is spinning down, which I think it's fine to spend down to a certain dollar amount, but, you know, by 2023, it could be down to about 410,000. I mean, I think to, you know, a 3% increase over the next couple of years after not increasing it for quite some time, I don't think $3 a quarter, $12 for a year is gonna hopefully do too much impact to a person's individual situation.
Okay, if you were to add some of the ARC funds into this fund, do you need to increase it at all?
Into what fund? I'm sorry.
Well, I.
Do you need, if you put ARC funds into the sewer fund, do you need to increase?
What do you mean, ARC funds?
About doing the ARC funds for the water and the broadband.
Yeah, yeah, but.
So you're gonna take some out of the water and broadband and put it here?
We're gonna get more next year, yes. The answer's yes. So at least I'm posing the question.
Yeah, no, I understand the question, but I think it's a difference without distinction. I mean, with the ARC funds, you have to specify a project. You can't just chuck it into an account. So if you're gonna say, we're gonna spend it on something, you could maybe pick something off the list of things to do and say, we're gonna put it to that, and then do it. Because there's a timeline associated. You can't just like, oh, if we put 400 grand now, we're up to, instead of 400,000, and 2023, we're up to 800,000. No, I'm saying, I think you have to identify something that you're specifically gonna spend.
Identifying it. I'm basically saying that to save the taxpayer that extra $3, $3 a quarter, I'm saying, take it from another place to do that. That's what I'm saying. And you can make it very specific as to how much you're going to add, because you have a number of people that you're going to be charging and everything else, so it's, it's quite doable.
But then we're gonna be charging them more money for something else that we took that money out of, or less help in broadband? I would say, like, we don't have so much money. So if we take, you know, however, you know, however much money to cover the $3 difference, we're gonna not put that money towards something else, like the broadband or the well.
Because one of the things we talked about last time, if we put it to the water fund, maybe we don't need to issue any type of debt for a water, for doing those wells in 2023, so I think at some point, the money can only be spent once.
Yeah. Personally, I'd rather pay $3 more a quarter on this than worry about financing the well or something else that we could use it for, or the people that are, you know, want the broadband, they'd rather have the $200,000 go towards the deed contract than saving $3 a quarter on this.
Okay, so then I'm just gonna say, $3 versus $2 kind of thing. I just kind of wanna know how, how and why, and more specifics. I don't have to have it tonight.
Okay, yeah, that's, and I think the 3%, I mean, we've been raising, I mean, with all the water infrastructure improvements we've had, we've been, the water rates have been going up about 4%. I mean, ultimately, if we did two, two or a three, would it have a huge impact on this, you know, sheet? Probably not, but I guess a 3% increase seemed pretty reasonable as far as, especially seeing the, the rate hasn't been adjusted in, I think, five years or whatever, so.
Okay, just, okay. All I want you to do is see where I'm coming from, and I know you do. And I just want you, when you are going to hand me a rate, and I'm going to question whether it's $1, $2, $3, or $4, I just want you to actually have a real honest-to-God form as to how you got there.
Well, I think, I mean, when it, going back to page seven there. Or page six, sorry. I think it's just more to try to balance how much to raise the rates, but to see how it looks like the cash flow is projecting out, and if we do one versus two, that, you know, I can plug in the numbers, and they're gonna fall more, they're gonna fall quick, more quickly than they are projected right now, so it's just trying to hit a sweet spot of what's, we think is fair to be charging a residence, but still meet all of our infrastructure, you know, maintenance, repairs needs that we know, you know, are scheduled to happen in the next couple few years.
One of the things I think is important, I think we should actually look at our, our fund balance in our sewer and our water and say, and even, we have a fund balance policy for our general fund, but we don't have a fund balance policy for our sewer and water funds. Maybe we, maybe that needs to be part of, because that would tell us, okay, our fund balance policy says we shouldn't go below X number of dollars or X percent or whatever. I think that should happen for our water and our sewer, because we never know what's gonna come up. You know, we had that water break on Kings Point Road, and that cost us a couple hundred thousand, whatever it was. You know, so we don't know what's gonna come up. So maybe if we had that fund balance policy, then when you run these numbers and we say, oh, we're gonna be down to 300,000 or whatever, that's not acceptable to our policy. So, we can't get that in place right now.
Yeah, we can.
And it may not, but we should work on that, I think. That'll give us a target. Then that, that, don't you think that that would be a good thing to have?
It'd help, because I know, we've had even Todd Hagan from Ellers, or, you know, even before him, as far as, the utility funds is always harder to gauge. I mean, I think one gauge can be like, you know, I guess for the general fund, we use the, you know, the 40%
Right.
as a minimum. We try to be at 50%. You know, if you use that same principle, or, you know, page eight, you know, the operating expenditures is budget, you know, 860,000, so is it, you know, is 400,000, then, you know, around 40, 50% of that, fine, that's sort of what I was almost using when, you know, by 2023, it was gonna be round, around 400,000, so, you know, is it, is it operating 50% or 40% operating expenditures? Plus, a lot of times, they say for the utility funds, add in the debt, you know, your annual debt payments. Like in the water fund, it's, it's a different story. We have 800,000 of annual, you know, debt we're paying based on other, so you gotta take that into account in the water. The sewer, we really, we have about 80,000 worth of, of debt payments, so it's a lot less of a scale. So, no, I think the council would wanna set something like, but that's what I'm almost using as an informal policy in my head, to sort of be like, hey, I don't want the cash balance to get much lower than this, otherwise, we're gonna have to be looking at bonding or issuing, you know, or some financing source.
If something happens to you tomorrow, we oughta have something on the books that absolutely positively states it.
I'd be okay, yeah.
And we should be in a position that if a resident walks through the door and actually wants to hear something that's more than you just feel it ought to be a certain way, I think we oughta have it.
The other thing we could look at is, and I'm sure Gary can tell us, it's not tonight, you don't have to do it tonight, but tell us, you know, in the past, we've had X number of unexpected issues that we've had to use the fund balance for, you know, things have come up. So if we kind of have that in the back, we kind of know what that might be, and then we kind of know what that fund balance should be, I think it gives us a clearer idea, too, so. I don't know.
That's our inter, right, Brian? I mean, we do have it in the one sheet there. We've listed what
Well, yeah, we have budgeted.
What upcoming capital expenses that we feel are coming are already on the one sheet.
Yeah, as far as the different lift stations and the different, what we think is gonna be for planned, you know, check valve replacements, control panel upgrades and those, but then maybe you're even talking about some even unbudgeted maintenance or things.
And there's always, and that's why you have a fund balance, so that if there is that emergency, you have some funds with which to do.
And that is also included in there under what's, I don't have it firmly, Brian. There is listed in there, though, for emergency situations for that.
You have some things for emergency lift station repairs, emergency lift station pump replacements. We do try to capture some of that based on knowing annually how often that happens, or how, what the extent of that is, so.
So maybe you could bring this back, just briefly saying, okay, here's what we're gonna recommend percent-wise or whatever of the, this is what the fund balance, we should try and maintain it at this because of these emergency or whatever on, or you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Basically, it's always good to have, you know, a little bit of cash on hand, whatever the council, whatever the percentages. The council feels comfortable. I know, I know the percent I feel comfortable at is from, you know, because there's gonna be things that come up, and you can see in this year, when we because we had, you know, funds available, we didn't have to go out and maybe issue like any type of.
Like for the Minneapolis Avenue.
Yeah, we spent 700,000, $800,000.
But I don't know that we need to keep, you know, a million dollars in there in the sewer fund. Maybe it's
No, I don't think.
500 or 400 or whatever.
I think you're gonna get your wish. I don't think it's gonna be that much.
No, no, I think it's gonna be more like 400 or whatever.
Right, and I think the discussion tonight, I spoke a little bit about this with Ann today, is, you know, she, she was pointing out the the contingency funds for all this, and her question was like, well, why don't we just kind of do it instead of just wait for it to break kind of thing, and it's like sometimes you know, sometimes you don't know. A lot of times, you don't know, and some of this stuff, and stuff just breaks. That came up a couple of years ago, and some of those breaks, there was like one after another on this one street, and it's like, wow.
Over there, yeah.
That's why they're fixing it now, but, or last year, but that, that's the whole point. I think it was just more of a planning tool, and so I think when you see those fund balances start to go down to roughly 40, 50%, I think that's why he plugged in the increases he did, but, I mean, Brian said he could probably come up with something for you to look at, but you know, unfortunately, you can't predict when we're gonna have sewer breaks and things like that, naturally, just happen.
And then let me continue to be a pain. The, the next sentence, one of the biggest costs in the fund is the Metropolitan Council municipal wastewater charge. The charge is 6.3% going from 2021 to 2022, and it appears from the, the tables that that's a hefty increase. So, do we know why, and do we expect another 6% next year?
It's hard to say, because I think it's all basically Gary's, correct me if I'm staying on, but basically, it's just they take all the flows from the regional area, plug it into the formula. They, they had, I wanna say they had a 4% or 5% increase to their overall budget, and it's, it's just like when we levy our property taxes, and it gets, you know, some people get, you know, a little more than the average, some a little and less based on the formula, and I think we maybe had a little more.
As we grow, there's more. There's more usage into their system, so that's where a lot of that comes from.
Keep going up.
Yeah.
So we should bank on the 6% next year as well, probably.
Potentially, depending on, but yeah, if I look at page five, a couple of years, it wasn't going too bad. It was, you know, three 23, well, I mean, it's, yeah, I guess it's gone up pretty precipitously.
Since 2015, when Woodland Cove started building out, it skyrocketed.
Yeah, most years, once in a while, it's held a little bit better, but yeah, on average, it's, it's gone up, you know, 5, 6%, it looks like, decent increases, yeah.
I think Gary's right, there's some growth.
Okay.
It's factored in that.
And then I had asked Mike this morning, as far as the 1,100 to 1,200, who does it hit? Does it hit the builder or the resident? I believe you said the builder?
Well, they pass it on.
They pass it on.
All right, and that's it for me.
And anybody else?
Well, I had the question about Met Council as well.
I was comfortable with the, obviously, the Met went up 6.3, but your $3 a quarter is only 3%, so it's not like you're trying to be captured all there. You're gonna get it in some connections, but the fund balance is being drawn down as your projections, and we don't know what expenses may pop up from time to time, so if we set a limit to draw down to, at least we're not bound to that as we would be with the with the reserves for the general levy, where we would jeopardize our bond rating if we drop below, so I mean, setting it is good so that you've got a, if the question comes up again, or why are we increasing X dollars? Well, it's to keep the reserves at a certain percentage, because we feel history has shown that. That's a level that we need to stay with, to feel comfortable with potential breakdowns, so I think it's good to set it, as long as we're not, a future council's not bound to it to say, well, we're getting down below, and now we have to do something about it.
Yeah, I think the, to your point, I think you're exactly right. The general fund one seems to be more industry-wide type of and that even the bond reviewers and stuff, when you go out for debt, you know, tend to look at that. A lot of times, they'll ask, do you have any type of policies for your utility funds? And I think it's not very common that a lot of cities do, but I don't think it's a bad thing for us to implement, or at least as a general guideline, so.
So then are we saying not only for the sewer fund, but for the stormwater fund, the water fund?
I think more for the, well.
Are you gonna do them one by one?
Well, that, my question on stormwater fund was kind of the same thing. At what, you know, at what point is it gonna be too high? That, that's, was gonna be my question for the next discussion, but with, with the stormwater fund, we don't really have, we don't have a lot of ongoing. Those are more projects that come up as, kind of as needed. For instance, stormwater pond cleanouts and
Are we gonna have any swamp costs come along here eventually?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, where we are, and then also if we have any contributions to make for Whale Tail and our Little Long, for the CIP, for those, we have that coming up, so that's a little more up in the air in terms of ongoing costs, whereas the sewer and water funds, we can kind of do a CIP plan. Whereas stormwater plan, some of these things, we're dependent on getting grants and/or Pioneer Sarah Creek or MCWD. we're dependent on getting grants and/or Pioneer Sierra Creek or MCWD participating in, in those costs. So, but let's talk sewer first, and so with the sewer, you'll bring it back real briefly kind of with the, and I think to John's point too, maybe we should look at a water fund balance policy too, because, and that's almost more important, because we do have quite a bit of debt in our water fund, and we wanna make sure that we have enough to cover-
Yeah, and that's even almost a continuation of a discussion from when we bonded for the water tower a couple of years ago in 2020, it was how much, I think we spent like 500,000 out of reserves and didn't bond for the whole thing, cause-
Right.
Yeah, and if, maybe if there was a council policy, it would be more set that maybe we would've made a different decision back then or whatever. So I would be fine with that as far as some-
And so maybe if we can't get at that immediately for this budget quarter, is there some way of having at least some kind of a unwritten policy for the sewer fund balance?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
You know, I mean, just come back and say, this is what we think we need as a fund balance for sewer, and, and we'll try and maintain this, and then maybe next year, we'll have to tackle the actual policies for sewer and water, and then we could take a look at stormwater as well, but for sure sewer and water, I think.
Good.
Okay, all right.
All right, sounds good, thanks, good input, good feedback. So then, yeah, the, the second one is the, we've started transitioning into is the storm surface water utility, same on page 13 there, similar type of documents were included as far as the financial management plans, the current year, or a draft budget for next year, and then a year-to-date through third quarter of 2021. The current cash balance in the fund is about 635,000, which I do remember, I've been here long enough to know that back eight, 10 years ago, I used to get letters from the state auditor that said our fund balance was too low. So I think we've-
But that was, was that for the stormwater?
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, so, that, and we turned the corner, I think, cause I think that was back when our fees was like, you know, really low, you know, it was $9 and then finally 18, and then, so we were able to, I think when I looked at the spreadsheet here, was our, our cash balance used to be about 203,000 back in 2013, and I think when it was even below that, 2012, 11, they, they thought that was too low. So, but as far as the, for 2021 to 2022, I guess, the current fee for reference has been $26 a quarter, $104 annually since 2018. I guess, you know, staff would recommend at least the council consider a $2 increase to the quarterly fee to 128 a quarter, 112 annually. You know, we started talking about some of these different projects that could be coming in the future here, some would probably be, you know, shared with some of those other entities the mayor was, was referencing. I don't know, I guess, maybe I'll just-
Well, I think in this one, I'm just gonna weigh in, what I'd like to do is kinda hold, hold the line at the 26 for this year, or for 2022, and then take a look, a real serious look at one, maybe a fund balance policy, but also take a longer look out for realistically, what are, in, in, you know, what are we looking at for projects? You know, what, what stormwater ponds are we really going to be doing? What is the estimated cost for those? I don't think we've really dived, dove, dived, dripped, dove into this deep enough or enough to really know. And so to just, to me, it seemed a bit arbitrary to just kinda say, let's just tack on $2, it's not that much. I'd rather look at it kinda maybe in a five-year plan and then say, okay, these are the ponds we are going to be doing, this is street sweeping, this is ditch cleaning and that kinda stuff, and, and kinda do a bigger look at it.
That's fine, yeah, and I'd probably agree with that, between the two funds, the sewer one would be the one that has the more urgent needs as far as having that, the increase just within more of the capital expenditures that we are probably, have more certainty on.
Right.
I know the stormwater fund, I think just, and I'm actually, I think we're not the only city that struggles with it, I know others due to as far as, you know, how much, how involvement, and I know we've had the swamp started, I guess for lack of a better term, I think we don't know exactly where it's going yet or what the outcomes are gonna be, but, I'm, yeah, if, I think, as long as hopefully this would be the impetus to make a little more progress on, you know, or being able to define things in the, in the stormwater fund a little more versus, right now, I think it's probably just not real clear as far as how much of an investment the cities needs to make or should be making or-
Cause I don't-
What partners we're gonna have, et cetera, so.
Exactly, cause I don't see anything beyond 23 here either, so we're not really looking out, but we have to, I know we do have stormwater ponds we have to do, and, and we're gonna continue doing street sweeping, and we're gonna continue doing ditch work and culvert replacements, but then, and I know there's other things coming up too that we'll have to partner with, so that, that's kinda where I'm coming up from, maybe 28, 20, sticking with the 26, and then look, taking a deeper dive into this next year.
And maybe that's okay too, cause I think at the next work session, we'll be talking recycling fund. Now, that one I don't think we can punt on.
No, no, but, but then seeing, that's the thing, and, you know, residents say, oh, you know, this is $4 more and this is $8 more, and, you know, I don't know, it's not that much, but then people start thinking, oh, you're just, you're just putting this here and a little here and a little there and a little there and a little there and freezing, you know, so, okay.
I do like that plan, because I think too, it's gonna force us to start doing the swamp. You know, it's one thing when we all agreed to do the swamp program, we all said, but we wanna make sure that was all through, we're paying for the software of all of it, but we haven't really seen a lot of progress on it. So I think if it's all laid out, it'll force those projects to be done.
Yeah, hopefully, just like we've gotten, I think we've gotten pretty good at getting the road planning earlier and stuff, I mean, we need to make an emphasis to really have the swamp in this, at least by spring of next year, you know, to be able to incorporate.
Right, okay.
Plus, your numbers here are gonna look a little bit better per, I communicated with Gary this morning, that 75,000 on the skid loader would, is not gonna be here this year, moving that out to the future, so this bottom line projection increases by 75,000 without doing anything else.
Sure. Yeah, I saw that correspondence, yeah. Yeah, no, I think, I think that's, that's fine, maybe take a pause and a little bit of longer, longer look at this one for, with plans towards 2020.
And I think we'll, we'll eliminate the suite, sweeping.
Yeah, I saw there's a-
So we don't, I, I, so we don't need to replace the 2007 skid steer next year?
No, talking with Randy who does all our maintenance side, we can, we kind of, we kinda have it in there and then we move it out as we look at it, and we evaluate it, he'll evaluate it again in January, but this year it looked really good yet, so we can probably push it off. I mean, we did it with all our equipment, that it's coming up, and we look at and see, is it gonna be next year, kinda move it along, so we keep kinda, trying to make it last as long as we can, you know, looking at, of course, trade-in value yet at that point too, but for, for what this is, yes, we can push it out probably another two years, cause we do have the street one, which is in worse shape, that's gonna need replacement coming next in 2023.
And that's the 2005 tandem axle dump?
No, that's on a different, it's on the streets IP, but yes, we have the tandem dump truck coming up too, which is gonna be a big chunk, so.
We're able to shift those out a little bit, but for 2022, I guess to, to our consensus of not needing to raise the rates, we should be good for 2022.
So Brian, when we get these final numbers for budget, final, you'll move that 75,000?
Yeah, cause some of those were just from our earlier budget discussions and just, as Gary's had his chance to look a little closer with his staff as far as, I think the, we're able to, if we can move things out a year or two, it's always, you know, if they can, if they're functional and working, let's, let's get the every last dollar out of them, I guess, or, so.
Okay, all right, so, that's it?
Yeah, that should be good.
Wow, that was easy.
So, yeah, one out of two will raise, I think that's okay, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, and we'll, like we said, come back with this sewer so that we know, is two okay, is three okay, is none okay, I mean, just, and what should that fund balance be, you know, what's appropriate for that, so.
We gotta predicated to get on the 40 to 50%?
Is that okay as our parameter?
I think, I think like, yeah, 40, 50, I mean, if worse, I think that would be a good number, between 40 and 50%. Worst-case scenario is if something broke and it was like an $800,000 item, you'd have to go out, either borrow from a different fund or else you'd have to bond for it.
Don't wanna do that.
Okay, then, then I would stick with 50%, little higher than-
I mean, yeah, I know, it's, it's hard to, I mean, to raise rates and stuff, but I know when I talk with colleagues in Eller, or, you know, our financial advisor, I mean, it's still out, cash is king, I mean, as far as if you can have enough on hand where you're not being greedy over stocking, but if you don't wanna get too low where you're always gonna have to incur interest costs or other costs that you, you know, issuance costs for, when you could've maybe just saved a little more, so.
Well, and I think if, if Gary takes a look and sees what unexpected things have come up, let's say over the past five years, I don't know if you can do that or not, but, and say, you know, annually, we average somewhere around 200 or 300,000 of unexpected costs, we need to build, but, okay. So, we're done?
I think so, I think we're good, yeah.
Genesis, 5:30?
6:30.
And it's 6:31, all right, so now we have another half hour.
This feels like we just finished the council meeting, doesn't it?
It does, it does, because we've been here since-
Guess what? It's a triple.
It's a triple header, all right. So, we have concluded everything on our agenda, and is, if there's a motion to adjourn the work session, we can still be adjourned.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathleen, and thank you, Anne. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0.